Good evening and welcome to the Tewksbury Board of Selectmen meeting of November 26, 2024. It is now 6:02. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First item on the agenda is the Trahanly Use Presentation from MCO. Is there anyone here for that? If you can come up and introduce yourself for the reporting secretary with name and address.
My name is Mark O'Hagan from MCO and Associates. We have met.
Just speaking to the microphone so she can, she won't be able to hear you.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my name is Mark O'Hagan from MCO and Associates.
Okay.
Thanks for coming back.
Yeah, really, thank you for coming back. I'm going to give you the floor and I'm assuming you're going to give us another presentation?
Yeah, I know we had gone through the full presentation before. Does, I figured I can do kind of a truncated version and then focus on some aspects that may be important for your decision making. So just a brief overview, again, I'm Mark O'Hagan from MCO and Associates. We are based in Harvard, Mass. Affordable Housing 40Bs is substantially all my business. I've done 30, maybe 40 40B projects. I also have a firm. We do lotteries. We do a lot of consulting with different communities. We work with DHCD, Mass Housing, MHP extensively with for sale and rental communities. This really is the focus of what we do, is working with the communities to create affordable The brief overview on the proposal, as you may recall, we had some varying feedback that there was interest from the town's perspective in both some elderly housing as well as potentially some affordable, I mean, I'll say a family housing per se. So we had proposed a mixed project. We had 32 individual residences, small cottages. This is very similar to a property that I'm building. I've got some actual imaging for it further down in the presentation that we can take a quick look at. These are modest homes. They range from about 1,150 to 1,400 square feet, so modest by today's standards for individual homes. And I've actually been even looking at some products that are smaller. We've had more interest for people looking for more an elderly focused product. They don't need as much space, one level, potentially some, you know, a one car garage forum incorporated. So it's certainly, there's flexibility in the design in terms of what we could incorporate to really work with the town to focus on a mix that makes the most sense and the right number of units that fits what your goals are. In addition to the cottages, we also proposed a single building with units that would be for 62-plus residences, so more modest in size, targeted to singles, couples, older people. They were 600 to 700 square foot, one bedroom units. There was some common space in the building, design wise. You can see up here was designed to be relatively low profile building. It's only two stories. So not something, you know, there's a building that's adjacent to the site that I think we talked about before. It's very vertical and this is a much more lower profile, some metal roof details, front porch, very soft look overall, comfortable sized units for people. With the units being smaller but comfortable, the rents can be smaller, can be lower, the market rate. On this unit, we also had proposed that the affordable units be targeted to people at 50% of the median. So the rents would be, I want to say around $1,200, $1,300 for the affordable units, which by today's standards is very affordable. You know, even people that are strictly on social security really could likely afford to live in this building. The floor plans, I think we had seen them before. I think the key aspect is, again, 600 to 700 square feet. There is a nice common room for people to use on the downstairs. Upstairs as well, there's some common area. The downstairs could be made available for pub meetings that could have a public component. If they were clubs or organizations that were focused on your elderly population, there'd be space that they could utilize as well. The cottages, as we've talked a little bit, there's a range of sizes. This is from a project I'm just completing down in Lancaster. They're generally two to three bedrooms. As I had discussed, we do have one bedroom designs for another community that we're working with and we are looking at potentially making some units that are a little smaller and more specifically targeted towards 55-plus or 62-plus. Just really cute designs, some nice detailing on them, broad front porches that people can use, really a welcoming layout. They are one level living on the bungalow plans as well as the three bedrooms have a first floor master suitable for handicaps, suitable for, you know, multi-generational families where you could have an older individual downstairs and then, you know, next generation up on the second floor. These all would be energy efficient. These days, everything is wildly, potentially overly energy efficient, but these would be designed as all electric homes to be in compliance with what the state is looking for. The interior is a very nice finish. I've got some pictures further down. I'll run through the styles quickly. Again, this is a two bedroom, one and a half bath. They just call it the, it's a two level or cottage as compared to the bungalow. Again, front porching, nice details, floor plans, really comfortable living space, island kitchen, dining room, living room up front, laundry on the first floor, half bath, second level, two really comfortable sized bedrooms for people to utilize, full bath upstairs. This is an image of the home actually completed at the other project. Next style, this was a two bedroom bungalow, really terrific for people that may be older, people that just want a one level living. It's about 1,150 square feet. The second level for the windows is really just for aesthetic purposes without it. It's just a hell of a lot of roof. Again, really open floor plan. You walk into this home and it has living space comparable to what you'd see in a 24, 2500 square foot home. It's just really open, comfortable. Again, island kitchen, two bedrooms, two bathrooms, just a nice, simple layout for people. Here it is again, actual finished product at the other community. Lastly, this is a three bedroom, really just a kind of an extension on the first floor of the two bedroom design. This is about 1,400 square feet. We added the master bedroom and a full bath in the back of the home, as you can see. Again, pretty open kitchen, living, dining area. We show the study, we ended up making that a little more of a niche, so we took out the walls because it just felt more open, but still leaves a space for a home office that's kind of set aside and able to be utilized on the first floor, kids studying, et cetera. Second floor, again, two bedrooms, a full bath, you know, just a nice, efficient layout. Yeah, this is in real life. This is a few interiors of the homes and the interiors, if we were fortunate to work here, would be similar. Nice white countertops, quartz countertops, nice shaker cabinets, stainless steel appliances, a richer looking trim than you see in a lot of places. The doors have some detailing. I do a nice laminate throughout the home, so not dealing with carpeting that needs to be maintained and changed out. Just a nice, clean, modern look, upgraded fixtures. These are homes, these don't feel like an apartment. They've got nine foot ceilings on the first floor, really full sized windows, so it's a home. It's not an apartment that people are used to seeing really all the way through. This, let's see if it comes up, where is it? There's a video that I don't think I had on the previous one. I'm finishing up the project in Lancaster. So this is a 32-unit property. This is built on about, the building area is about six hours, six acres or so. So we've just had my marketing people up to get a sense of it. We're just finishing it off. This was from last month, so the homes are all up. We're kind of finished the landscaping on the last group. It's going through, but just to get a sense of the overall look and feel of the property. You can see there was one existing home there that looks unlike the others, so that I had inherited with the project. But, you know, some of the common themes of, some of the homes have individual garages, a center focal point as open space that gives people breadth from one side to the other. You know, you have someone to your right or to your left, but overall, it's a much more comfortable layout and design. Let's move that down. Come on. Oh, I gotta do this. So this, I can talk a little more specifically about the layout. The key considerations that we gleaned from the information and from some preliminary talks again was to maintain some open space, maintain a buffer from existing neighborhoods. There was a discussion about a mix of home styles, so we targeted the senior apartments for 62-plus as well as the single family homes. There was also, we're also advised that we wanted to keep some space available for a playground or a park that might be available. I know we had talked last time, there is the existing playground that you'd rather make arrangements to utilize that space, which certainly can be incorporated in the design. But prior to that, we really just put some placeholders. I mean, we showed a basketball court, a playground. It could just, you know, be a broader area of green space for recreation. So really flexible in terms of what it can be, but it's a sizable amount of space and a tangible amount of space up towards Salem Road, so it's accessible to the public. Throughout the site, we really were able to incorporate an ample amount of parking. We had two plus spaces for all of the cottages. We used, you know, one and a half spaces for the senior apartments. I think we've got more than that. We've got 40. And then we had probably an additional 20 spaces that could be available for public usage in relation to the park environment, depending on what it was going to be used for. We extended that green space where we've got a Village Green and a Gazimbo as a nice transitioning zone going into the housing. In the housing, we got a mix of parking that is along the street as well as in a parking area towards the back. You know, we've broken that up again with some vegetation, so it's not just one big piece of asphalt. We did locate that in the back where that, there's the paper street that runs. So from the parking lot to the neighborhood behind it, there's really, you know, that existing buffer of the right of way that's, you know, probably 50 feet or so it looks, 40, 50 feet. Around the perimeter of the property, we contemplated some community trails and walking paths that can tie into some of the streets that died into the property before. We show the second means of access, kind of in the upper left hand corner. That's intended to be an emergency access. That is an existing access on the school property, so, but that could be gated in conjunction with fire and police to minimize access and impact on that surrounding neighborhood. In terms of dealing with the current abutting properties, you'll see in the front where we proposed the senior apartment, we pulled that off of the property line, although it is only two stories. As I said, you know, it is a bigger building, so we didn't want that right on the property. So we've got the parking area, so the building itself is probably close to, you know, about 90 feet from the property line. And even the homes adjacent to it, they're not right up to their property line as well. So there's some existing vegetation that we'd be able to maintain. As you move through the balance of the property, the rest of the homes are really, you know, two stories, you know, one and a half in some ways. So very modest residences, generally, you know, consistent in size or smaller than what's in the neighborhood. So isn't anything that would be imposing on their situation. The site does drop down a little bit from the abutting properties that would, you know, bring them down even a little bit more visually. And there is a good amount of vegetation that surrounds the property now that certainly would, you know, wouldn't be touched and can be enhanced in areas that it may be necessary. So for the project itself, I had some other properties that I had done that we had discussed before that you can look at your leisure, but these are all communities that I have either built or am building. This is one in Bolton that was finished, trying to get down to some bullet points that I So overall, I think some of the, you know, some of the key components and some of the things that we talked about at the last meeting that I think is important is, I propose this as 57 units without specific direction. I incorporated a mix of the two, the 25-unit building. What's nice about it is it can be modified to fit the needs. If you want a heavier focus on elderly housing, we can do that. If you want to reduce, you know, make the elderly housing smaller, unit smaller with less units, you want to take out some affordable units in the cottages, we can work with you to come up with a mix that makes sense and that works from a density and a scale that you think is appropriate for the site. Another key aspect of this is that there's, you know, all of the funding for this site, it's either going to be private capital or just, you know, direct lending from a local bank or a local lender that I utilize. No additional grants that we need to request, no additional funding that we'd be looking to secure. From a town's perspective, the only funding that we'd, not even funding that we'd be looking for or funding in lieu of to deal with the demolition and the cleanup of the site. So that's really all we've specifically requested. In the rental building, you know, there's the potential for an elevator if that's something that the town felt was important. We asked for a couple of dollars to help offset the cost of that, but again, that's optional. So no extra grants, not applying for anything, hoping to be secured. So this is something that I'm doing in other locations. We can move very quickly on it. For all practical purposes, the RFP, as it's been prepared, probably has 80% of the components of a LIP application that would be necessary. If there was a consensus on the scope and scale of the project, a LIP application could be back to this board in two weeks to start the development process. The LIP, it is the selectman that would actually sign off on it. So in terms of having the control and having the input that you want to make sure that it's the proper size, this, you would be approving that application. It's your discretion and certainly I can work with planning, whichever parties that you felt would be necessary, to make some plan revisions to kind of rightsize it for what you're looking for. But all that could be done very quickly. We could be submitted into DHC very quickly and work on the final design plans while they're doing their process. But literally, this project, given that, you know, there's water, there's sewer, if the town is looking to move quickly, you know, we could probably be in construction a year from when an agreement was reached. The state's going to be supportive of it. I know the town has experience in dealing with 40Bs, so it could be something that becomes an active project, people living there in a very short amount of time. So, and again, overall, we got, tried to do a mix to have a range of people on site, young kids, families, elderly people throughout it. And we all would count towards the town's SHI. I know you guys are in reasonable shape on that. So that was the basics of it. I know you heard it before. I didn't want to be too redundant, but hopefully I covered the nuts and bolts.
Okay, thank you for that. The reason we have you back again, because I think board members had more questions on changing certain things. We're not the planning board, but how does it fit into the, into the community? And I think they had more questions on that. So we'll start off with Ms. Wellman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to be called on first.
I like to surprise people.
I do appreciate that about you. That is one of your more charming qualities. Thank you for bringing back your presentation. I am still impressed with your presentation as I was last time. Financially, what would be the arrangement vis a vis the land and the agreement? So I understand that you're looking for funding to help with demolition costs of the old school.
Correct.
Your presentation mentions that you can, privately, that can be done less expensive than the town can necessarily do that, but if the town pays for it, then we have to pay prevailing wage and so forth. So I'm not sure how that works.
I think we'd have to work out what the structure is. Essentially, I think what was contemplated and we had provided an initial lease package that we would be looking to do. The town wasn't interested in selling the property, so it would be a 99-year lease is essentially what was proposed for a nominal sum. And I would need to confer with my counsel if it's the case of how we could structure it such that that funding happens through my entity to try to work around the prevailing wage. I can't say I'm an expert on how that works, to be honest with you, but we can certainly work for a means to do it. In other, you know, other properties where I'm acquiring from a town of, again, through a lease process, through an RFP, there is some funding that they're providing to offset some water expenses and we haven't had any conversations of that nature. So it could be that it depends on, you know, when that comes into the cycle, but I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to misstate what I can do and what I can't do. But we'll certainly work with the, with the community in either sense to come up with the most attractive package or cost wise, to make it as affordable as possible.
What, in your other projects, when you have a leasing arrangement with the community, what is the, what is the typical lease payment you make? What is that structured?
It was nominal. I think it's a dollar a year. So they were donating the land essentially.
Yep.
They didn't want to, they chose that they didn't want to sell it. Seems similar to this community, so that's how it was structured, just very straightforward.
Yep, and that's what I anticipate would be the case for Tewksbury. For the consideration of the valuation of the land, what, other than increasing our SHI, what specifically would the town, like the town of Stowe, I noticed that you said that up to 70% of units would be given a local preference, sort of, what's the local interest in your option?
Well, overall, I mean, they're all going to be to the SHI. You're going to have 25% of the cottages, based on the proposal, would go to affordable tenants.
Yep.
They're at 80% of the median. We proposed that the senior apartments would be at 50% of the median. So those income levels for the 50% of the median is probably for a single or two people, because I think these are low numbers, are about, you know, 45, 50,000 for those. The maximum income for the rentals for the affordables would be targeted to people. I want to say it's about 97 for a three bedroom, about 90 for a two bedroom. So by today's standards, really affordable overall in general, as you said, they would all be targeted towards the SHI and 70% can be requested as local preference in conjunction with DHCD, which I certainly think they would support with the town's involvement and the nature of the project. We had also, you know, designated the space and would work to prep the space being available for a playground area. And, you know, we're certainly, you know, willing to work with the community if there's particular needs, depending on the scope and scale of the project that's approved, whether it's providing more affordability or something, we're certainly something that we can look at once we have a scope that's established. So open to that.
Thank you. I really liked the mix that you've presented for senior housing versus family housing. I would not support increasing senior housing on the site. I would support, if anything, going to more family style housing. We have a number, we don't have enough. We have, we have a number of senior housing, affordable projects available in our community. We do not have enough, but we definitely don't have enough family housing.
Sure.
And so I appreciate your design and I think it would be very attractive for the community. One of the things that we hear a lot about is that people do want to keep open space and there's a concern of that because it's diminishing and of course, once it's gone, it's gone. And so I appreciate that you've brought forward some open space to the community. I think if it's buried deeper in the site, it feels less and less accessible over time.
People wouldn't have, they would, A, they wouldn't see it and they wouldn't have access to it, so that is why we pulled it up front.
Yeah, and it would feel intrusive, I think, sometimes for people if you don't, if you don't know that it's accessible. And so we would want that to be something that's kept forward. I have some concerns, I think that were expressed previously about traffic and so close to a playground, but that's a design matter that can be managed through the planning process. So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reiter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You had mentioned, thank you, the presentation, again, I like the concept of combining the two. Do you have a number that, that works? We talk about 57 units. I think it's a little congested in the back. I'd like to see it reduced. Do you have a number that, that just, you know, you have that point where it works and it doesn't work?
I was looking at around 24 instead of the 32.
24 would be that least number that really makes it work.
If we're looking at, you know, keeping the seniors and dealing with the cottages, you just, you need enough scale, enough revenue to cover stuff. So I think with the two components that that would, that's a number that could be workable.
Okay. And is it required, I know I talked about this last time, understanding that you're not going after any grants, 100% required to be fully electric?
It's not 100% required. As of, I think, last month, MassSave that provides the bulk of the subsidies, they no longer provide subsidies for any, if you have any fossil fuels in the house, even for a fireplace, even for a range, you lose that, that whole amount of subsidy. It's also, it's very challenging, as I'm dealing with it right now, with the smaller homes to meet the HERS standards. You know, they've got air circulation, you know, you get bigger homes, you've got more volume, it's easier to make some of the numbers work. So, and those numbers are dropping again. I think they'll be down, I think you're going to be at 42 now, 45, 42 or 45 is a HERS. Two years ago, it was like 60. So it's very challenging to meet it. It's not impossible to do it with a, with a traditional heating system, from what I'm advised, but once you start taking away the subsidies that can be, you know, $7,500 a home, it becomes really challenging to make the numbers work. So I, you know, that's, I've just, I've kind of resigned myself of using the electric. We're actually seeing that the numbers aren't too bad from a utility perspective. Based on the project I have in Lancaster, I acquired it, the infrastructure was in. So I had a limited number of taps that I could do. I had to put in some tanks and things. So the affordable units, I kept the utilities instead of taking the allowance, I'm paying all the utilities. Or instead of, I should say, instead of granting an allowance and then paying it, I'm paying all the utilities. And we're seeing numbers that were about 200 a month and they were projecting, it may go up a little bit now that, you know, we start dealing with the winter, but for homes that were using the air conditioning, which draws as much as the other stuff, we were pretty satisfied with it, given the overall value, given the structure. So I think it, I think it's just the reality of things. I'm certainly open to look at it if it is something that, that's important to the town, but everything, everything around the town is shifting towards the all-electric. So with the, with the smaller units, my hunch is that that's probably what you would see, but I'd certainly look at the other ones.
Okay, how about on, just on a large apartment style?
Same thing. If you, if you look at these new 250-unit properties, they're virtually all split zone heat systems. It's easier to Just, it's easy to break it up. They're smaller units. And even with the smaller units, I don't have a problem with it. I've got some, some projects I'm designing now, which is, you know, a more of a, of a, of a traditional family home, you know, 22, 2400 square feet. It's a more complicated system, trying to deal with all the bedrooms, with all the stuff. With these modest ones, I'm not really seeing it as a, as a burden. But it's, it's virtually the standard in larger rental communities now, using the split-zone heat.
Yeah. Just from an aesthetic standpoint, when you're trying to, when you have a unit like that up front.
I understand.
You've got 25 exterior units versus when you don't. So again, I just, looking at that facility, that building being close to the road.
Yeah. It's, it's absolutely a consideration. It would be a design consideration as well.
Okay.
You know, we could look at, I, I've seen them on some properties of, of clipping the roof and putting them up and, you know, putting a rail around it. We've done that on some, some properties with, with clients. So I understand the concern entirely. But there are alternatives to either mask them aesthetically on the lower level, or, you know, locate them on the roof so that they're not readily visible. But I understand the concern.
Excellent. And then you talk about the cost of a potential elevator. Obviously, I think that it would be a priority putting in, if we're going to be putting in senior housing. Rough numbers?
About 200.
200?
Okay. Two stories, pretty straightforward.
It's standard.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you for the brief overview of the presentation. Big fan of the concept. A number of the questions I had already got asked, and I will say I am glad to hear that we can reduce the numbers. To Mr. Ryder's point, I wanted to know what that, what that floor was. So when we start looking at, you know, how you might be able to rearrange that, to reclaim some of that space, it sounds like we can go down to 24. So kind of losing that, I think, eight units, that's pretty sizable, and I think we'll increase the open space on that parcel.
It is, yeah. Even if you look at, at eight units along the right side, it's a, it's a lot of green space. You could potentially move the apartment back if you wanted to. So it, it, it's real estate that gets freed up, and I've got some creative people that can find a good way to use it with as much feedback from the town as possible of how you, how you'd prefer to use it, so.
Yeah, no, I think opening that up will, again, give you a lot more options for where things go, how it gets laid out. As far as the rental costs on the bungalows, what were you projecting again for that? I think you mentioned it, but I missed the number.
For?
Rental costs on the bungalows.
The market or affordable?
Both.
Okay. The, I'm going to look at my thing again. The, the market for the bungalows at the 1150 is probably about 32 roughly. The affordable numbers, I think, were about, I'll give you the specific number. I apologize, I didn't.
Oh, my problem.
Affordable rents, 1892 to 2035 for the two and three bedrooms. That's based on current numbers, current income numbers. And that's also based on allowances from, I'm not sure which housing authority that I utilize, but those would be the numbers if they were built today. So theoretically, if it's a year, they, they could increase modestly, but that's based on the state calculation.
And how many of those bungalows were going to be affordable?
They'd be 25%. So at 24, there'd be six, yeah.
And I know you had mentioned last time, this is something I wanted to dig a little more into, was you mentioned that if the town wanted to contribute more, we could bring more of those units into affordable. Is there, do you have some calculus on that, or kind of projections, what that might look like?
It would be, you know, it's kind of a dynamic model if we're talking about reducing units and, and making some changes. At, at the end of the day, we can look at the difference between the rent, I mean, the difference in rents is probably, you know, 13 to $1,400 a month. So we're either looking at a capital reduction that would relate to that on a per-unit basis, or some type of a subsidy beyond that. So that can give you the, the basics of some of the math. But I, again, if I have a, a fixed number of units between both of them or for the project, I, I could certainly provide a more, a more specific number of what value would get, could get you, once I'm at that, that baseline. We take units out, obviously, there's overhead and just general expenses that are spread amongst extra units. So that per-unit cost does go up, that needs to be, needs to be looked at. But if, if this was a concept that the town wanted to go forward with, in conjunction with the LIP application and settling in on a scope that's right, I could be prepared to have specific numbers available for the board to consider.
Yeah. I would be interested to see kind of what 50% at a minimum looks like for those affordable units. Again, the, the intent of this is to create more affordable housing.
Understood.
And we are addressing the, the senior component, which I'm happy with. I'm glad we're able to do both here.
Sure.
But I do want to make sure that we have the maximum number of affordable units.
Sure.
Again, that's the, that's the intent behind this, so.
Understood.
Let's see here. That's it that was not covered. So I appreciate the time. I appreciate you coming back out, and I look forward to being able to see what those numbers might look like at 50%.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Grammer.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in and putting in the presentation. Again, we, like you said, we had additional questions, and we're trying to find the best use for this fossil.
Sure.
Other developments, how many other developments do you have that are mixed-use of family and elderly housing?
The main one that I have right now is a larger project I'm doing in Stowe. So in Stowe, Mass.
The new one, right?
What's that?
The new one?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So we've got 124 traditional, single-family homes. I say "traditional" in the sense of, you know, 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, fee-simple lots. I've got 40 of the cottages, consistent with what we have here, with what I've proposed here, the same style, and 25, and a single 25-unit building for the elderly as well. So we really have a, a full range on that site.
So how, how far is that, those projects separated between?
Oh, they're, they're integrated.
Integrated?
Yeah, they're integrated. I can show you the, the site plan up here, wherever it went. Phone a friend. So, and I can show you which one, it's kind of in the middle of it. So what we did is, the, the project with Stowe, I'm, I'm acquiring the project, they're not donating it, I'm buying part of a golf course. And we spent probably two and a half years figuring out an overall concept for the town to be able to have a level of control over the overall site. And what was important to them, again, was to have a range of housing. You know, they, it's oftentimes, projects are one thing or another. It gets complicated when you have multiple, multiple schemes. So let me get to that project first. So, just a, a brief background on the site. Stowe Acres has two 18-hole golf courses. So they had 325 acres, spectacular land. It's in chapter, but the underlying zoning was all residential, unlike some other sites that had recreation, conservation, restrictive zoning. This whole site could be converted to 150, you know, big pregnant colonials, pretty easily. Soil's a wonderful, grades are modest in two-thirds of the site. So I had started talking with the golf course about taking some of their land, because they felt they didn't need the full 36 acres. I've done a couple of other projects in town, so they reached out to us. And we spent, the town actually hired a planner to help support this and identify throughout the property what would be the best way to utilize all 325 acres. So throughout, you know, as we got through this process, and I, I have the comprehensive permits on it, the town ultimately acquired a conservation restriction on the south course that has the clubhouse. They're shifting over the, the driving range, using it there. On the north course with dishes, I'm acquiring 70 acres for 189 units of housing. The town is acquiring the other 110 acres that will be golf for a period of time, for nine holes, and then that'll transition to local conservation and recreation. So they've invested about $5.5 million in this site between the conservation restriction and everything that they're doing, before they put anything into, to dealing with it. So in our negotiations with them, it was a similar thing. You know, we've got a variety of constituents, a range of ages, a range of needs. I think fortunately, I'm seeing in most communities now that they're, they understand that just having a traditional, you know, subdivision, you know, large, you know, larger lots and just strictly single-family homes is really not meeting the needs of their, of the town now. So we started very early on about incorporating a mix, and how could it be done? And so what we have here in this front section, you know, we've got the entrance that goes out to the clubhouse that comes in, we've got this, you know, this common lawn, this is probably 3/4 of an acre. So that building, the multifamily building, was really designed to look like a, like a broad clubhouse, with the front porch. So it looked, you know, very natural in that location. They also felt it was important, would be a great usage. You know, we've got walking trails that are going around the property, we've got trails within it. And they had the feeling, as we talked about at the last meeting, that people that are older, they, they, they like, perhaps not all of them, but people that would live here, they like having more life around, they like seeing kids, they like seeing activity. So integrating into it was something that we all felt would, you know, would be, would be a bonus. So it's, it's.
Is this built yet?
No. No, this, I have permits, we'll be starting it next year, yeah.
But do you have any developments that is mixed as, right now?
Nope. The developments generally have been focused on, on one usage, because that's simpler.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, where this has worked before.
Ah, I don't, you won't see it very often, because it, it is more complicated. Without a community interest and involvement, most developers wouldn't, wouldn't propose it. You effectively have not two comprehensive permits, but you've got two whole projects with two separate rounds of funding, two regulatory agreements, two sets of, of books and, and requirements that you need to deal with. This is what I do, so I'm comfortable dealing with those, but most people aren't. They wouldn't, they wouldn't deal with it. The multifamily here, candidly, was as much of a throw-in economically as looking at it as a standalone project that, you know, that would be viable. And it's, it's similar here. If I was paying for the land, I don't think that the multifamily building of the elderly housing would have been part of the proposal. The small units, there's not a whole bunch of, of revenue that's, that's there. You know, you, there's, it's just, it's not a, it's not a big, it's not a big project in and of itself. It, it isn't economically viable in today's environment. So here, because I've got all the other work that's happening, when I say "here," I'm talking about the Stowe project, that the water, the sewer, the roads is substantially covered by the, by the other activities. And I, I was able to do it, and I look at it as, you know, long-term, there'll be some income for me. Here, in, in the Tewksbury site, fundamentally, it's pretty much the same thing. You know, the cottages do provide the, the revenue that, that, that will drive it from an economic perspective and deal with the bulk of the site work. But again, it's important to the town. Not having to, to pay for the land provides the flexibility to do a building like this that otherwise you probably wouldn't see built, so.
My, my, it was just, really, I mean, I, this is a whole different, I mean, this is a golf course. I've been out there, played that golf. I took down half the trees for you. So you're welcome on that.
Well, thank you.
But that, you know, that's a large, large development that's in a, like, it's not on a, you know, congested, I mean, it's busy out there, but it's not like on a, you don't pull out of there when you're in, on a very, like, already busy roadway.
Sure.
So it just, I mean, all the developments that you have built, from what I can see so far, are in largely not very congested areas.
Well, the, the nature of, of where my business is are, are smaller communities. And, and working in those communities has its, has its benefits, that you have a little more space, has its drawbacks, that you have no services. So here, where I've got a treatment center and a huge well system with a, a tank that'll fill this room for water. It's, I mean, to me, I look at it as a, my perspective, obviously, the town's going to make a decision. Again, if you weren't providing the land, you wouldn't see the type of project that I'm proposing. You'd either see something that needed more units, more vertical, to be able to make it work, or heavily subsidized is, would, is the other alternative. And that's, you know, certainly something.
Really, what is the simple thing I'm trying to get down to? I understand what you're doing with this, I understand your whole, but it's not, it's not in Tewksbury, so I'm not really concerned about it. My, my thing is that I'm trying to get, is find out, like, where a mixed-use development has worked successfully. Like you mentioned that, you know, some seniors like being around kids. Well, where? It's like, I'm looking to find out, a lot of, like, when we build our housing, like, we have senior housing over here.
Sure.
Family housing over here.
Sure.
And in most places, when you have senior housing, it's like they have it, yeah, I mean, we put it like a playground there so their grandchildren can come and visit, things like that. But a lot of, most housing, it's like having that mixed is something that I'm not sure blends well. And if that's, and that's something that, I mean, we could discuss it, like I said, but I'm just, was hoping that, like, if there was, there was something that already worked, I'd love to hear about it.
I think from a practical sense, once you get inside 495, or at least this zone of inside 495, people are very close to each other, whether they're on the same property or the same development or not, that you've got commercial that's literally right across the street, that, you know, for projects that I deal with, that's, that's not typically what I deal with. So every community has, you know, the, the nature of the community. Tewksbury is a denser community than Stowe or than Lancaster. There's no argument. But with that density, you have proximity of people living together in closer proximity. So I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to answer it other, other than, than that, because I can't give you a, a specific example of people developing.
I'm trying to think of a place where we have senior housing with a basketball court in front of it.
It doesn't need to be a basketball court.
Oh, I know, I know. But I'm just, that's why we're talking about this.
Sure.
I'm looking to find something that works. Like if, and we can have conversations about it, but the whole thing is, when I'm looking to some, to build something, and it's something that fits the element of their community, I, I want to make sure that we don't, like, say, okay, you know, some people like that. We build it and they don't. And then what do we, then we're dealing with it.
I'd be dealing with it economically, not the town.
I think my phone call would, my phone would ring quite a bit, so.
Yeah.
So just, but I want to make sure that when we're building something, it fits the community of what we're looking for. You know, I'm looking at the parking spots, I'm like, like, you know, maybe we even could even discuss, like, a club, I mean, I'm, this can work. I'm not being completely negative. I'm just trying to find ways of, instead of a basketball court, you know, things like maybe a clubhouse, or something that would, that would be used, like, they could use year-round, to where the seniors would work. You know, I'm looking at the parking spots. If you have two and three bedrooms, sometimes you have three or four cars. And so what I have is like 128 parking spots right here. And if you have some of these homes, and there's two or three bedrooms, you know, you get kids coming home, college kids, and they're all using the spots, I'm concerned about, like, how many spots are left for the seniors? And then if you have a recreational area, how many spots are left? And just trying to find out what works. You know, in my experience, I haven't seen a lot of mixed-use that actually works because of the noise level. Just seniors want their time, and they, they, they tend to, you know, focus on their hours of whatever their, their life is. And then you have the young professionals that are working their regular schedules. So it's, it's nice to be able to have something that works for everyone, but I'm just trying to find something that will work for that part of the community. If you can, if you condense all that housing in there, and you have that many people, the kids are going to need a place to go. They're going to need something to do. They're going to need some sort of recreation of where they're going to be going. And the seniors are going to need something to do. And I just, like I said, if, if it's, I, I've seen, like, the housing, if you walk into the senior housing, what they do over there is completely different if you walk into the family housing in this community. And so in blending it And so in blending it together, if I took both of those and put them together, I don't think it would work. That's, that's my perspective. It just is, and then having this lot is a good-sized lot, but it's nowhere a golf course. It's like it's, all the other developments you have are vast, open spaces of where there's open land and there's, you know, there's not a lot of congestion of what's going on. Where we happen to be is a very congested area already. So I'm just trying to, like I said, I'm asking the difficult questions now.
Sure.
Because I just want to make sure that when we build something, it works.
Yep.
The, I was going to say, you gave me the questions on the cottages. How many of them would propose to be two or three bedrooms? Like how many would you expect to?
The mix, that could be flexible. With the family housing, 10% would need to be three bedrooms based on DHCD regulations. So that would be the low end. Any more three bedrooms could be, that would be a conversation with the town. If, if 10% was all the town wanted, that's certainly a number that I could live with. So that's not etched in stone of what it is other than the 10% set aside that's required by DHCD or EOHLC.
No, I just, I, I know you said like one and a half spots for the housing, senior housing. And senior housing does tend to be lower numbers with vehicles and things like that, but there are going to be these other places where you're talking about having two plus. And if we do lower the numbers, then that creates, and there is some room out there that creates a lot of parking, but I don't want to have something where all of a sudden we're running out of parking space, where snow removal would be and, and those type of things. So, you know, it's, I still have some, I, I, I want to do some research to find like any location in this whole area where we have a mixed-use that actually works. And like if residents say this is wonderful, I'd love to hear about it. I just don't know of one.
Sure.
So I just, that's, that's some questions I have. I don't want to be the first to find out it doesn't work.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kratman. I just, my colleagues asked most of the questions and you've answered most of them. But I like the idea of having the reduction to the 24 so it isn't so crowded, so close together. But my other question is, you manage developments now, correct? And how do you manage those? Do you do the snow plowing, all that other stuff?
I, I, I have a management company that's focused on a particular development. So they, they manage, they hire a snowplower, they hire a landscaper. So they deal with that on a project-by-project basis. I don't have guys that are going around trying to plow one and then driving a half an hour to try to plow another one. They would have a team that would be local, that would be focused on servicing this property.
Okay. The other question I have is security and the, you know, the, the full price units? How are those tenants vetted? Do you have a process that they go through? Well, actually, all the tenants, I would assume.
All the tenants have a process they go through. I, you know, as an owner, I get frustrated when a, a unit that's empty and my, and my manager says, yeah, Mark, we had three people that were interested, but, but they didn't, they didn't pass the, the credit, the background checks that goes through. So it's, it's very extensive. It's the same for the, for the affordable tenants. They have to pass a screening as well. So it's, it's strict to make sure that we've got quality tenants that are responsible and pay their bills and haven't been kicked out of other properties. We don't want to inherit people that can be disrespectful or problematic to their neighbors.
That's where I'm going with it.
Yeah, no, I completely understood. So that's what, that's what the managers, you know, that's one of their primary focuses from my end, is to have a rigorous screening process to make sure we've got a community of people that understand what we're trying to do and are focused on being good neighbors.
So you haven't had any issues or?
No, no, I really haven't. I, I can't say we haven't had any issues, but nothing substantive that's been hugely problematic. So I've been fortunate from that sense.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. What is the pleasure of the board? We're going to schedule another thing and you can come in with the reduced housing or whatever the questions were asked?
I think from, and I don't, what, process-wise, I think if it's the case, if the town wants, you know, some type of a designation, I know that there's multiple proposals, so I would imagine the town would need to, to make a, a decision of which they wanted to go with. If I was designated, then I can work with, talk with, with planning or come and, and talk with the board. If, if that's the reduction that we're looking at, then I can move with that with my planner and then come back with a plan as part of a LIP application for the, for the board to review and accept. So, but.
As Mr. Kratman stated earlier, we're trying to fit this with the best project we can possibly get.
Sure.
You know, and we do have another applicant, as you would say.
I understand that.
You know, so we want to review that. But I appreciate you coming out and I appreciate your presentation. I really like this concept.
Yeah, yeah. So I can, I can work with the, you know, with the design. I, obviously, I just like a level of comfort that if I'm putting more resources into it, that it's, it's going to be recognized. That's the main thing that I'm, you know, that I'm looking for. But I've advised what I'm comfortable with taking out of it. You can see the space that it would open up, but exactly, you know, we could have more substantive conversations about the open space, what would be considered usage if we wanted to shift anything else around. We know we got the play area. So it would be helpful, and again, it could be with the board or, or with staff to look at it real specifically, have some, some ideas that reflect your interests and the town's interests. And then I can work with my planner to come up with alternatives. And, you know, it is a kind of a dynamic process of working through it to get to this. I think I had, you know, eight different versions to settle in on something that worked. And that's something that, you know, the town would, would be involved in that process ultimately. You could see some of those versions. All right, I may come in with a couple of different versions if there's, you know, some different ideas that we could talk about and then modify a LIP application based on that. So the administrative aspect from my end, because I do a number of them, isn't, it's, that's not, that, that's easy stuff for my office. It's really getting a plan that is acceptable to the, to the board and something that you want to work with. And once we have that plan, everything can move really, really quickly beyond that from a, you know, from a design perspective, from a conceptual, you know, and then shifting into, you know, dealing with the engineering. It's a relatively straightforward site. So I, I think all of that would, we'd be able to do it, you know, really efficiently. I don't, there's no wetlands, there's, you know, there's really not a lot of, I mean, obviously we've got the, you know, the site, but we're not dealing with a bunch of graves, we're not dealing with ledge. We've got water, we've got sewer, we've got power. It's, it's pretty straightforward. So once we've got a, a plan that the, the board likes.
All right. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for coming back in.
Thanks very much. Hope everybody has a really nice Thanksgiving.
You as well.
Hope you're not here too long tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Vis a vis our process on this particular site, does it make some sense for us to, rather than invite the applicants back as to have, put this on a future agenda, give some time for public to give us some feedback, ask the administration to put the presentations up on the website? They can link to them and people can find them easily. And then we can, you know, kind of make a decision to go with one or the other or, or neither. I don't have an appetite for putting this out again. I mean, how many RFPs have you issued on this site, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Montori?
At least three. At least three times.
At least three over the last number of years. And, you know, sometimes you come back with nothing, sometimes it's something de minimis. And, and now these are kind of the two best options we've had in years. So I, I think it's time to fish or cut bait and, you know, give the public some time to react to it, let them know what's before the board, and then, and then make a decision so that these gentlemen can, can, can either move on to the next thing or we can start doing.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah? That process-wise, that makes sense?
So you can take care of that, Mr. Montori?
Absolutely.
And we have to schedule the Chumsford one? Do we have them on a future agenda?
On the 17th.
On the 17th? Okay.
And Mr. Montori, if you could communicate to, we didn't get a timeline from him and I forgot to ask for that. He, he referred to how, roughly how long that would be. But if you could ask Mr. Hettison also for sort of a project timeline, that would be great. So the board can have a very easy sense of what is the, the cost to the board? We're going to be asked for how much money for these projects, side by side with how much time, what the timeline is and so forth. And we can weigh those options. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. It's now 7:02. So we're going to move into, our next item is Route 133 Cannabis LLC, 1625 Andover Street, Retail Marijuana License. Anyone here for that?
Anyone?
If you can introduce yourselves for the records.
Dean Graffio, 52 Pendleton Street, President of 133 Cannabis.
Caitlin Woodward Sampson, Senior Vice President of Business Development, Gold Standard Consulting.
James Zuckman, Attorney for Route 133 Cannabis.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin, the board had sent you some questions and I'm going to read the questions and the answers so we have it on record. Okay? The first question was, who has direct or indirect ownership stake? The answer was Dean Graffio is the sole owner of Route 133 Cannabis. Second question, what agreements are in place for future distribution of ownership or profit sharing? A minor equity stake has been discussed with the landlords as means to mitigate the costs of cash rent. This would be a small percentage. Gold Standard has agreed to a consulting service agreement that would take no equity, ownership, or control position, but allow for a 9.9% revenue share if KPIs are met. Neither agreement is in place as both our contingents and on licensure. Okay. Next question, who are the owners of Gold Standard? It's Raphael Arnoff is the sole owner. Raphael is an experienced entrepreneur, developer, and cannabis industry professional who now works to consult with licenses on business best practices. Caitlin Sampson is the day-to-day manager of Gold Standard. Next question, question four, who are the investors in Gold Standard? Raphael Arnoff, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing his name correctly, is the sole investor in Gold Standard. What commercial loan, this is question number five, what commercial loan agreements are in place? Gold Standard has executed a $1.5 million line of credit with Route 133 Cannabis contingency on licensure. Question six, six, what percentage of ownership is allocated for employee dismersment, dispersment? Up to 9.9% of equity would be placed in employee benefit trust, which be, which would vest for five years of service. For purpose of tax, tax, for tax purposes, the ownership would remain in the trust and the employees would be designated beneficiaries of the vested amounts based on the length of employment and their position. Question seven, Route 31, Route 133 Cannabis is currently a single-member LLC. How do you plan to distribute your stock or ownership shares? As all LLC, answer, all, as all LLC can, the LLC could allow for membership units to be created at the designation of a sole member once needed for either the landlord's or the employee's benefit trust. Question eight, the character of the business is described as applied, applied to the Cannabis Control Commission for a licensure. It is the intent to transfer the license once obtained. Answer, the Secretary, the Secretary of State does not allow entities, does not allow entities without current cannabis license to describe their businesses as sale of cannabis or otherwise. The accepted process is to file an amendment to that, to the effect, once the license is granted. There is no intent to transfer the license. Question nine, excuse me, given the fact you have stated your previous application had no additional interest in other applications, how do you explain the commercial loan agreement with Canavanna? As stated by Canav, this is the answer, as stated by Canavanna in their complaint, no Canavanna persons or entities ever spoke to Dean Graffio or had any contact with him in any capacity. Please note that Dean Graffio and Cabana have, have had all complaints against them dismissed with prejudice and the CEO of Canavanna has even written the town a letter in support of Mr. Graffio. Question 10, what is the connection between David O'Brien, Patrick Nichols, and Canavanna have to do with this proposal? David O'Brien, the answer, David O'Brien is a childhood friend of Dean Graffio and has acted in a limited capacity as an informal advisor on certain issue given his extensive cannabis experience. He has no ownership and no control and no rights to receive any revenues. Patrick Nichols and Canavanna have no connections to this application. What assurance, it's question 11, what assurances does the board have that David O'Brien, Patrick Nichols, the Canavanna will not have any, have an ownership stake or receives from profits on this venture? And it just says, please, please see prior response. I'm not going to read the whole thing again. Number 12, given David O'Brien's involvement in your previous application, could you explain his involvement in this application? Again, David O'Brien is a childhood friend of Dean Graffio and has acted in a limited capacity as an informal advisor on certain issues given his extensive cannabis experience. He has no ownership and no control and no rights to receive any revenues. Question 13, given the fact that you are a resident and business owner in town, how do you feel about the potential damage that would be caused to the learning center if this is approved? This is a legal business, the answer, this is a legal business applying to a site in an appropriately zoned area for use, which has received site plan approval for the premises. There is a screening, there's screening between the properties and a robust traffic mitigation plan, peer review, and approved by the planning board. There is no potential for damage other than unfair prejudice against the legal business and the clients of that legal business. There are hundreds of dispensaries open in Massachusetts and no substantial evidence that they harm any adjacent businesses anyway. There are dispensaries next to a childcare facility throughout the state. We have, and we, we have read into the record during the planning board's hearing, an email from Little Children's Schoolhouse Daycare in Brookline that directly abuts one of the busiest dispensaries in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, stating, stating there is no issue with the siting over nearly a decade. The Brookline Daycare stated that they have seen no loss of enrollment or parent complaints in the many years, but on the side-by-side operations. The business will be professionally operated and managed with robust mitigation, strategies in place for traffic flow and customer management. Claims that responsibility to cannabis customers entering store discreetly, making the purchase, and continuing their errands will somehow damage the adjacent businesses with its more presence is only prejudicial against the legal business and their clients. Question 14, do you believe having a dispensary next to a child learning center enhances the public image of Tewksbury? This is a legal, answer is this is a legal business asking to cite an appropriately zoned area, interstate overlay. Retail marijuana uses are explicitly permitted in such districts with proper approvals. And the daycare existed prior to the addition of the overlay district in that area. Therefore, it is known during the approval process that such a business could be cited, cited there, and nevertheless, such a rezoning was approved by the voters on October 3, 2023 town meeting. There is no buffer, there is no buffer required for the daycare either. The CCC or the Tewksbury zoning codes and thus no legal basis to substantiate any physical separation of the business beyond that generally applied by the building codes. We feel that having a new modern building, well-designed, well-managed, is an enhancement over the current vacant lot that's on that site. To suggest there's a mere presence of a dispensary, a legal business type approved by both the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the voters of Tewksbury generally, and in that location specifically, is how inherently detrimental, has no legal basis, and only continues to be unfair stigmatization of the legal cannabis and those who are responsible to use legal cannabis. That's it for the record. And I need a glass of water now. And I need a glass of water now. We also got correspondence. Because I want to read this into the record, too, if I don't lose my voice by then. This is an affidavit of Dean Graffio, sole member of Route 133 Cannabis LLC. Dean Graffio, as sole member of Route 133 Cannabis LLC, swear that the following statements are true in response to requests for additional, additional information from the town of Tewksbury. I am the sole member, number one, I am the sole member of Route 133 Cannabis. There are no other participants, other participants or interested parties in this license. Specifically, neither Patrick Nichols and/or David O'Brien are now members or equity holders in 133 Cannabis LLC and will not be in the future. On pain of license forfeiture, as disclosed in my responses, the only potential future equity holder is my landlord, whom I intend to give a small equity stake to defray the cost of cash rent similar to a restaurant. Gold Standard Consulting LLC, my hired management consulting services provide, will not receive any equity in the license, but has an opportunity for a royalty revenue share based on performance of contracted services. Number two, my attorney, James McMahon Esquire, is the chairman of the Board of Mass CBA, a nonpartisan cannabis industry trade association, and has been since 2018. David O'Brien is the president and CEO of that organization, organization. Similarly, since 2018, Mass CBA holds no interest in any licenses whatsoever and is a networking and advocacy group for the cannabis industry, cannabis industry professionals, with a mission to convene, voice, and advocate for the Commonwealth's cannabis business community, an ancillary service provider to the cannabis industry, such as banks and other vendors. Route 133 LLC is not a member of the CBA. I intend to fund, this is number three, I intend to fund this license using my own resources, and I have not solicited outside investments during this process. My landlord is providing a bill-to-suit building. The only non-personal funds are a line of credit from Gold Standard Consulting Services LLC, which agreement has been disclosed and provided in my application, my application materials. Should any new investor be needed during the operations, Route 133 Cannabis LLC will obtain the select board approval in addition to the CCC approval prior to joining the company. And it's signed in the pains and penalty perjury, this date of 26th, dated 2024, Dean Graffio. Okay, and the other attachment is the lease, and I'm not going to go read the entire lease because I can barely talk now.
We appreciate that.
What's that?
We appreciate that.
You don't want to hear Pat talk?
Well, you know.
All right. With all that entered into record, board members, we'll start with Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate the answers. Thank you for putting those responses together. I, my opinion unfortunately hasn't changed too much. They did, those answers did shine some light, and I was glad to see them. But my two primary concerns and reasons I'm not in favor of this application are, one, again, the proximity of the childcare center and the, the damage that could be done to the learning center, which is a pre-existing business. I know you were there, Dean, when the town meeting passed this, and I think it passed by like one vote. It passed, I understand that, but there was, it was a highly contended zone, so it personally for me, it doesn't, doesn't sit right. Lots of other places this could go, lots of other zoned areas that I would, I would love to see you apply for. My second issue is kind of the amount of effort and the, the muddiness that was in throughout this process. When we start getting affidavits, kind of swearing to that, certain people are not involved or money's not coming from here, that doesn't give me a warm fuzzy. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm not in favor of this application, but I, I would love to, to see you apply somewhere else with a nice, clean application and having all of those answers for the boilerplate questions included from the start. Thank you.
Mr. Krabman.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I concur that I'm not happy with the, you know, having to get affidavits and all these things. But with that said, it's been presented, so I really appreciate the fact that we got those answers, because I, I want to make sure that the community understands that, you know, that this is, any license that's coming before us is supposed to be for the benefit of the community. And, you know, I was not a big fan, you may say, of this type of business, of where you may go into town, but I wasn't against it either. I, you know, I'm kind of a traditionalist when it comes to what kind of businesses you have when you're going into town. With that said, I also work for the residents, and the residents overwhelmingly passed this, that they wanted this type of business in a community. So we found locations, we've looked at it, and we've tried to find something that works. I'm very concerned with the traffic. And so some of the locations that we've looked at is to try to figure out where it can work and what offsets it. This location, I like the fact that it's not far from 495, that some of the traffic, I still have some concerns. I want to make sure that, I mean, I live not far from here, I see what the traffic is, and I want to make sure that traffic can flow. The roadway is pretty wide up there, there's, could be some mitigation that's put in place, and I want to make sure every effort, if this is approved, is to make sure that traffic flows as well, if not better, if something's put in there. That's, that's the goal always, of keeping, people, allowing them to go home at the end of the day, while bringing revenue to the community. And, you know, I'd like to, I know we have traffic, plans of what is proposed and some things of what will go on, but I would like to have, you know, some, something from the applicant to say if this thing, if, if approved and traffic becomes a problem up there, what would, what would the next steps be to try to rectify that, and what steps would you put in place? I mean, hours operation, you know, that's, that's one thing, I get that, but like, you know, mitigation work is what I'm looking at. You know, would you possibly put a D cell lane into the property? Would you, you know, we've talked about the in and out of how people would go, and, you know, we, I think my, one of my colleagues mentioned something with the planning board about driveways, so I'll let him finish up those questions, because I'm sure he will ask those, but those are the things that I'm looking for to hear before I vote on this. So if you want to speak to it now, I'm sure there'll be additional questions.
And so before I answer the questions, I should, Pat, I'll just read it. I put this before I answer the questions, because I know it'd come up. To address any issues raised by the board, but not otherwise covered in these questions, Route 133 Cannabis has committed to the planning board as part of their peer-reviewed and approved traffic analysis and submitted traffic mitigation plan to review and address any traffic issues on a perpetual enrolling basis post-opening, six-month and 12-month intervals, and to include any necessary amendments or modifications thereof. We will also voluntarily commit to providing a 90-day update and coordinate with Tewksbury Public Safety Agencies for opening day and thereafter as needed. This is in addition to numerous traffic calming and mitigation items included in the conditions of our site plan approval. So we're more than willing to reassess, do what's needed. I'm a business owner, I don't want traffic, that's not good for a business. It's on our end and your end, so I'm more than happy to sit down, spitfire, and do whatever we need, you know, whatever the experts, I'm not a traffic expert, but whatever we think needs to be done, if that's what it takes.
And just to add, there are nearly 300 dispensaries in the Commonwealth right now, including numerous in this area. No one is going to, as much as Dean is going to be a fantastic operator with, you know, Caitlin's assistance, no one is going to wait in line to get into a dispensary that they can't easily enter and exit, just the same as any other business would have those issues. So we have the exact same goal, we want it to be seamless, we want it to be easy in, easy out, because otherwise we'll lose that customer. So the town has the interest from a quality of life standpoint, we have that interest from a more pecuniary basis, but we're both working on two roads to get to the same goal of making sure that traffic is mitigated, of making sure that traffic is not going to be an issue. As Caitlin so eloquently says, that's, that's our first pain point of losing a customer, is how easy is it to get in and out of the building, and we want it to be completely seamless. So whether that's reconfiguring the lot, adding more lot attendants in our mitigation plan, or, you know, adjusting anything else we need to adjust, that's our first and foremost priority. We need to get that customer in the door, and there's only one way to do that, and that's make it easy for them to get there.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Redd.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to address a couple of items that, that's been talked about this evening. The overlay district. The overlay district was presented by the town. So when this was presented, they knew something was going to go there if this passed a town meeting. I wasn't a fan of the location, however, as Mr. Krabman stated, I work for the residents. The residents unanimously voted in these facilities in town. The residents voted that this district be allowed for a marijuana facility. Along with that, like anything that we zone, comes traffic. The applicant, as being a board member on the planning board for many years, looking at every type of development that's been put in front of this town, whether it be a restaurant, a car wash, or a amusement facility, traffic has been looked at. Traffic is always going to be a concern in any industry, whether this is going to become a resident, a restaurant, it's going to become a gas station, a car wash, a marijuana facility, a fast food restaurant, whatever it is. I think the applicant is showing that they're willing to do whatever they need and willing to come back, and if you look at what they presented to the planning board and what they're willing to do tonight, I think those are key, those are very important aspects to this license. I am an advocate of business in this town. You know, we continue to hear from the residents that we do not have enough commercial components in this town. We're, we're presented tonight with a commercial component that's going to bring revenue into this town, that will offset our commercial tax. I apologize, my, our residential tax. And I don't want to look at cannabis, or whether it be a gas station or any other business, and say it's wrong. Again, the residents of this community voted yes. Residents voted for the zoning, whether it was by one vote or 10 votes. Town meeting spoke. They presented, the applicant has presented a packet. They have the financing. A local business owner, longtime resident of this town, is willing to go the extra steps with traffic. Again, he owns another business in, in this town. Why would anyone want to put a black mark on another business? That business is successful, there's traffic concerns there, but those can get addressed. I think what he touched upon about bringing in whether we need police details for the first couple of weeks, working with whether it be a one-way out of that back lot, I think those can all be worked out. The most important thing tonight is the license granting. In my opinion, the applicant has done everything within their power and presented everything to this board, and I think it decision be, should made tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Willman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Graffio, for being here again after, I feel like I've seen you once or twice before.
It's all right.
Thank you very much.
I missed you last week.
Yes. I, I agree with my colleagues, I, I think Mr. Ryder spoke very succinctly in his comments, I concur with his comments, and I won't repeat them for the sake of time. I'm satisfied with your responses on traffic. I'm satisfied with your numerous responses on your business relationships. I think you've done everything you possibly can to be as transparent. I, I never had any concerns, I understand the situation well, as we've gone through this over the last number of years, and so I have, I have no reservations, and, and did not. I, to Mr. Ryder's point, I like that you are an experienced local businessman. Your existing business operates very well, responsible, and, and giving back to the community. I feel this also helps make you empathetic to the other residents that will be impacted by your business if it is approved. And I, I, I think that that's an important factor. I did want to ask you a little bit, I asked the other applicants this, and I may have asked you this before, but I've forgotten now, because I'm old, as it turns out. I wanted to know a little bit about how your facade would present on Andover Street, and, you know, what your signage plan is. And let me tell you what I want to hear first, so you can change your answer if you want. I'm not looking for digital signs, so, you know, they're popular now in town, I know you have one in your other business, I know, and, and I, and I don't want to look like Route 1 in some other community, very fine communities in our Commonwealth, that's not what I want Tewksbury to look like, so I'm not, I'm not a fan, even though we have them, and, and what we have generally is well done. So anyway, I would like for you to address that for the public.
So just to put those fears at ease, the Cannabis Control Commission is also not a fan of digital signage.
Love that. They don't answer their phones, but I like this about them.
So we're actually statutorily prohibited from having that type of signage under their codes. So what we're looking at on the signage plan, internally illuminated signage, the same as you see, you know, on other businesses in town, so it's visible in the evenings, by CCC codes, that signage can only come on half an hour before sunset, turns off when the shop is off, so it's not illuminated all night or anything along those lines. All the signage that we've proposed, all meets Tewksbury sign code, very discreet signage, we are not allowed to advertise anything outside of the building except for the name of the business. So no product displays, no advertisements. We are also statutorily prohibited from doing any sort of discounts, you know, markdowns, sales, any things like that, so you won't see those, those banners or anything along those.
There's no like Christmas special sort of sale?
No.
Stocking stuffers? None of that?
No, only, only medical shops can do those, and to be medical, you have to be vertically integrated, you have to also have a grow and a manufacturing plant. You can take baby steps and start off small here.
We concur.
I promise you, no.
It's a whole other ball of worms. Dean is a retail expert, we're going to stick with retail. So signage, all meets sign code, very discreet signage, not asking for anything more or less than what's permitted by the zoning type. For the building itself, the landlord has proposed essentially a colonial-style building, I think is the best way to put it, sort of a modern colonial-style building, dark roof, white facade, I think there's a bit of back and forth between either stucco or clapboard. Windows will all be frosted, and we're looking at, you know, multi-pane windows to sort of break up those just for visual effect. You know, nice front doors and a little grassed-in area in the front of it, so really trying to make it as visually appealing as possible. And additionally, part of the mitigation efforts that we had discussed as part of our site plan approval was a significant amount of screening vegetation surrounding the lot lines, so that will also, you know, not only cut down the visibility from places that we don't want to have it be visible from, it also adds a little, you know, visual impact to have some nice plantings there and things of that nature.
Thank you, I think that's important, how you present to the community, as important as you well know. I, I did hear the concerns from the abutting childcare center, and, and I pursued my own answers from the CCC, hence why I know they don't answer their phone, or aren't great about responding to email, but they did, when I asked about kindergarten programs, because the law talks about the kindergarten piece. And at the time that you had made your application, there was not a kindergarten program in place, to my understanding. That being said, my preference at this point is to let the CCC determine if that's an issue, and from what I heard from them, it is not. issue, and from what I heard from them, it is not. So that is, I leave that to them. I think that of the three cannabis businesses that we may have, the other two that have been approved are moving along well. I think that the data tends to support a narrative that cannabis businesses bring up the community around them in terms of retail opportunities and so forth. So there's a sense from some folks that they bring negative impacts that tends not to be supported by the data. So I tend to look to the data for support when we're working in areas we don't know. So in general, I support your application. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I want to thank you. You answered all the questions, and there were a lot of questions, and you did your due diligence, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So now, with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
We are, the public hearing is no longer correct. That was close. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
A motion made by Mr. Ryder to approve the application for the Route 133 cannabis. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Mr. Krappman. All those in favor sitting by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye as well. All those opposed?
Opposed.
We have a four to one, with Mr. Mackey being opposed. Good luck to you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Great Thanksgiving, everyone.
Anybody need a break? Let's take, going to take two minutes.
The comment period is about to open.
Okay, we are back from recess. Next on the agenda, a residence. Would any residents like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Shannon Dougherty. I'm from the Learning Experience. Over the past year, we've come together almost on a monthly basis. I, along with some of the residents here, have been here to discuss our concerns over and over, number one being the safety of the children. We've had the discussion about the regulations around DESI. I understand that you're stating we didn't have a kindergarten program at that time. We provide care from six weeks through school age. The Doing School bus stops at our location every day as children get on and off that school bus and attend our program. We actually are working very closely with the Doing School right now on two separate programs that both fall into DESI. And also EEC is working on becoming one with DESI. Over the last year, they've only been able to give us one childcare center that has a cannabis location beside them. I have reached out to multiple licensers who cannot name a childcare center with a cannabis location beside them. I would have loved to have challenged them to give us a list, so I could have done my part in investigating how it's been having that location beside them. But unfortunately, none of the licensers know of locations, and the only one that they've said repeatedly is the one in Brookline. The other thing is, we have the exact same landlord that they will have. We've been there since 2017. This landlord, by allowing them to enter, will now put our business at risk. It is detrimental to our reputation, to families feeling comfortable. It is a shame you're talking about bringing money into a town that I have lived in my whole life, that I have a center here, and now we're at jeopardy of having to leave because of that. So to open one new location, you're putting one that has been very good to this town, providing quality care, at risk. It is detrimental. It could jeopardize us. We have discussed this over and over since last November. We didn't have the opportunity to vote in October 2023 because that same landlord that owns our location and the one that 133 cannabis will be on never made us aware. There was a reason behind it. He didn't want us to vote. He didn't want us to give that opinion because that jeopardized him in having another sale. This, I don't believe, is meant to be. I don't believe anyone ever thought a cannabis center should be in the same parking lot as a childcare center. I really do believe that the town of Tewksbury has made a big mistake. This is nothing against Dean Graffio. It is the wrong location. There are empty buildings all around town. Choose another location, not in the one beside a childcare center. People need childcare to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
From day one, we oppose, as we always have.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else?
Tom Bowley, 852 East Street in Tewksbury. Mr. Pat Catino is here with me. He's not a--
1830 Main Street.
1830 Main Street. He's not a resident in town, but he is a building owner adjacent to me. We both have a similar set of comments to make. I'll go first, and with the board's pleasure, Pat can go after me. What I want to bring about is, I don't know if the board is aware of it or not, but we've had parking problems with Treehouse. Lots of parking problems. When they get full, which happens at different times, I mean, you don't know exactly when they're going to be full. You can't say it's this night or that night. It could be any night. Warm or cold. Their overflow goes into our facilities, mine, and then it'll fall over the pat. We, my people, the people that rent from me in my spot have been to Treehouse to talk to about it. Their attitude is, what do you want us to do about it? They have done nothing to mitigate the problem. We tow cars constantly in there. We have to have people there to watch when they're going to be busy and watch for the people coming in and watch them going over there. There's no sense of confronting them because they're just going to flip you off or, you know, say something nasty. And then have the cars towed. Then we have to deal with the half-inebriated, and some of them are, people that come back over because their cars are not there anymore. Now, I understand they were opening a facility across the street. They're going to have a parking lot. It looks like they've done a nice job so far. My question, and I think what I want to ask the board, or maybe not get an answer, but at least, but at least bring to the board aware, is there anything going to be done to keep them to police this issue so that we don't have to police their customers? That's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. So like Tom, I'm having a similar problem.
Can you speak louder? I can't hear.
Like Tom, I'm having a similar problem. The building is, the 1830, as some of you may know, is the Tewksbury Sports Club, where we have several other businesses there. And it's, a lot of the access, like the physical therapy people over there, it's required that the seniors or injured people park close to the building. We have a jujitsu center also, which works with children, and a lot of the times, the people are taking the spots closest to the building. And I've talked to them over there, and their response was, well, those are third-party people. It's not our problem. Sorry. You know, and I approached them to work out an agreement, to maybe set some parking aside on my non-busy nights, and they said, no, the city won't allow us. Now, I don't know if they've ever asked for a waiver. I don't know what the actual statute is regarding off-site parking, but basically, the response I got is, I know we don't have your permission, but we're going to park there anyways. You'll do nothing unlike it. Aside from that, when the people do get towed, they come in and they're drunk, and they're threatening the front desk staff and the workers there. And we've had some very hairy situations, as well as a pack of them surrounding the tow truck driver because they weren't happy. They got towed, and I have six signs out there, the front and back, and four mobile signs. So it's creating a problem. They have a problem. They don't have enough parking, and I wished them well when they started, and I brought it to their attention. I know they're making the parking lot across the street, but right now, immediately, they have a problem. They don't have enough parking, and their problem is becoming my problem, Tom's, and all of the business there. Aside from that, they've written nasty reviews, which have nothing to do with my tenants, about my tenants, because their cars got towed from the proximity of the tenants' businesses. So it's been a detriment to my business as well as the tenants.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Montori, could we look into that and get in touch with Treehouse and see if we have to bring them in or what we're going to have to do?
Mr. Chairman, if I could. So we're renewing licenses tonight. Perfect example, we're going to be renewing business licenses, and, you know, one of the things I, I understand, like he mentioned, that they put signs up on their property. Are we aware of Treehouse putting any signs up on their property, telling people not to park and not to park?
I believe they have, but I believe they have, but I have to double-check.
I don't believe so. I think, as I thought they mentioned, they asked. And so, I mean, as a good partner, I mean, we're approving licenses for everyone. We want all businesses to thrive, but I think they, good faith should work with their neighbors and maybe have them come in and discuss--
Sure.
--how they can put some warnings up so that the other businesses aren't, you know, they should do some mitigation themselves. We always talk about mitigation. If something becomes a problem, we want mitigation. And I know part of the thing is, when they opened, they were supposed to do a six-month and 12-month, but that's when they're fully operational, and they're still not fully operational. And so has there been any plans done or anything that talk about the overflow from this?
Other than the parking lot that they're building across the street, no.
No.
Do you want me to have them in on the 17th?
I would have, bring them in on the 17th.
Mr. Montori--
I think, I mean--
But through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that, let them know that, what they're coming in for.
Yeah, absolutely.
So they're prepared. And I think in the short term, you know, as the business owner just stated, that he was willing to work out something for extra parking. I think that would be a benefit, working with the abutting businesses until their lot is open, if that's something we can look at. Again, it would be an agreement with the businesses, but that may help until their lot is open. And also, if we can get a timeline on, I mean, it looks like it'll be spring at this point.
And sorry, Mr. Chairman. To that point--
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
--I have other concerns if they are doing that. There isn't any really great crossing out there. So I've been in there a couple of times on like a Thursday night. Leonardo, it seems like the weekdays are the busiest nights up there, and you see everybody running across the street. I have big concerns about the parking lot going across the street. I want to see what mitigation they're going to be putting in, but if there is something that's put on, maybe some lighting out there, maybe a crosswalk.
Sure.
So we'll talk to them when they come in. I'd like to see something to make sure the area is safe. That's all.
Mr. Chairman--
Go ahead.
--I'd like to contribute a little bit to this conversation. I think that's a great idea, Mark and Eric. I've been there and have heard the staff at the outpost warn people who park over at your businesses not to park. They're like, you don't park over there, move your car because you, so I have heard that myself. It's obviously not adequate. I also remember when they came in and they told us through their application process what their plans were for parking, and they were going to have parking lot attendance, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't know if they want to revisit putting parking lot attendance in their abutting parking lots to tell them not to park there, rather than these folks having to pay to police their own lot, depending on what they want, what the owners have an appetite for. But I would suggest that they reach out to their neighboring, you know, abutters to make a plan, and perhaps you can provide them with the phone number, since they may have lost them. I don't know if it's the appetite of the board to hold off and exempt the Treehouse licenses tonight until we have a satisfactory meeting with them on the 17th, but I would have no problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that either. Mr. Mackey?
Yeah, the only comment I was going to have was similar to Ms. Wellman's, making sure that those parking lot attendants on their own property, or at least facing those other directions, that they were not running into having other people's employees on not their property.
Sure.
As well as, I believe, and I'd have to go back, but I believe they said that they will have police details whenever there is an issue or there is perceived issue.
I believe you're right.
So if they need to have police details until their parking lot is open to make sure that they are not, you know, walking from other businesses, that might be something they need to consider.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Mr. Montori, also, can you have the chief made aware of this so on Thursday night or whatever night it happens to be that he sends a car down there to make sure the tow truck driver is not getting attacked? And that's all I have. And this is still the residence section. Any more residents?
Hi, Michelle Stella, 80 Pauli's Place. I'm not sure how all these things work. I don't know if it literally is a done, I mean, I assume that's a done deal. The license has been given. So this may be my last moment to say my piece on it, so I'm taking my last moment. Mr. Ryder, Mr. Krappman, I think I have all the names at this point. You made the statement that you've heard the residents, okay? And they did vote. We know the vote went through for the cannabis places. Three licenses were approved, and the sites were approved. But also to Mr. Mackey's point, the specific location was not approved by the whole town of Tewksbury, yea. And you all know that. Everyone sitting here knows that's not true, or is true, that it was, I didn't know it was one vote, but I knew it wasn't like the whole town of Tewksbury was like, yeah, that's a great location. And clearly, with the amount of us that have been showing up here for over a year, you know that the people who actually live around there don't-- know that the people who actually live around there don't want this. So, all I'm asking is, please don't say you're voting for what the residents want, because deep down inside, you know that's not true. That's a lie. I don't know, and I don't know if you can answer this question, can you change your mind after you've approved it here? Can you change your mind? Is that a thing you can do? I don't know a lot about this sort of thing. If there's any, if there is any recourse for us, we'll investigate it. I don't know about such a thing. But obviously, my voice is shaky. I'm really upset, and I just want to add on. I won't belabor the school because you always speak so well. But I'm going to remind you again, Pauli's Place is loaded with children. We're right across the street. It's not the right location. It's, and it's, yes, it's legal. We know it's legal. I just, I'm just going to keep pushing on it. I know that deep down inside, you all know it's the wrong decision, and I just don't understand beyond money, what would have made you make this decision? I just, I hope there's some self-reflection. I hope you reconsider. I'm sure I'm missing a million things that I wish I had a piece of paper in front of me to say right now, but you are disappointing the residents who live in that area. You have failed us. You have let us down.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else? Seeing none. Okay, next on the agenda is new business, water abatement policy. Mr. Montori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a copy of the updated abatement policy that was drafted by DPW Director Kevin Hardeman. I believe he made the changes as suggested by the board, and if the board is comfortable with the changes that are outlined in green and red, if the board could approve the policy, we'd like to get it, get it into effect as soon as possible.
Okay, board members have time to read it? Okay, we'll start with Mr. Mackey.
I have no questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kratman.
I just want to thank the DPW and the town manager for listening. I think these are improvements, and I think it leaves us in an area where if we have especially major water main breaks, that this is something that will be addressed. Now, we had residents receive emails, and the emails, like we had a meeting, and we said we'd listen to it on a case-by-case basis. And then we had emails going out saying, we have no policy. So, it's hard to say we're going to do something and then we don't have a policy in place. So, I'm glad the board took the steps to put a policy in place so that, you know, when it comes in, at least residents are being heard. So, I think this is one step in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I took the opportunity to talk to the DPW Director, Mr. Hardeman, about the policy the other day, and I'm satisfied with it. I think it will provide some relief. You know, it's, it's only so much you can do, but, and I think that this will be something that the staff will be able to rely on when, when you have these water main breaks of substance. So, I appreciate staff bringing this together and supporting.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll echo Ms. Wellman. I agree. I think this is a benefit to the town. Thank you, Mr. Montori, Mr. Hardeman, and I think this is going to help the staff because now they have a framework when a resident calls and there's an issue. Prior to that, they didn't have this in place, and I think this is going to be much easier for the workers there when they're speaking to a resident in a situation like this. So, I do approve it. Thank you.
Okay, I have no comments because everybody has said the same thing. So, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the water and sewer abatement policy draft that was presented in front of us. I just have one other comment. I just, you know, when we were starting this, we were talking about, well, no other city in town has that around us. Well, we can be the first. It's like, it's just because something, the other cities and towns don't have it. I've always said, I don't care what the other cities and towns have around us. It's like, what's best for the residents in our town? So, I thank you for, you know, we don't have to copy everybody. We do what's best for our residents. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the water and sewer abatement policy draft that's been presented.
Second for comment.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, also very happy to support this. Do, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I'm looking forward to getting our next water discussion on the books, because again, this is a Band-Aid for a very large problem that is still ongoing.
It will be. So, I have a motion made by Mr. Kratman, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous, five-zero. Next up is amusement licenses.
All right, let me help you here. That's entertainment, so I think that's what you're looking for. Amusement, automatic amusement. There we go.
Okay, these are the annual renewals for licenses. Twenty-two, 2025 automatic amusement license renewals, 11-26-24 that are completed. We have three businesses, TJ Callahan's, Whamisette Lanes, and the Tewksbury Wilmington Alks.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, seeing to by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. That's a five-zero vote.
That's the next one.
Pass it down. This is our sign. Okay.
Yep.
Next up is the 2025 class license renewals for auto license renewals. We have five businesses, Atamiann, Bay Four Motorsports, Penny's, Simon's, Tewksbury Auto Service, and Vitali Family Auto. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
A motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, seeing to by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. Okay. This one here, I'm not going to read the whole thing because this is the common vic to those license.
There's two, there's two packets there, Mr. Chairman, just so you know. One has pending documents.
Which one is this one?
That's the, you're looking at the common vic. The next one is common vic pending documents, that folder right there, it says at the top.
So, we don't want this one? Okay, so.
Hello, Mr.?
We have common vic's license, 2025, and we have a number of applicants to renew the license in Treehouse as one of those applicants.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation to approve the common vic licenses with two, two set-asides, by the way. One is Treehouse until they come in front of us.
Okay.
See if we can work out with things. And then there's another business in town, Petroyl, where the Board of Health has sent them violations for selling cigarettes to minors. They were called in front of the board. They did not respond. They have not paid the fee, and they've sent numerous requests for them to show up without anyone coming to that meeting. And so, I want to make sure that we give our Board of Health a little legs on that. We're holding their license until they resolve this matter with them.
Do you know, do you know which one it is? I don't see him on the list.
I don't think they're on the list.
It's probably not on the.
The, the, the Health Department sent an email to the town manager, so he has it.
No, but it's not on the common vic list.
They're not a common vic.
It might be under a different name.
Well, they don't sell, they don't prepare food. They don't have, do they have an entertainment license renewal?
I don't see.
There's no address.
Is there 365 May Street listed? It's Petroyl.
Petroyl, right. And they're not on here.
If you just say the address, we'll pull it.
Okay.
Pull it for what license?
Common vic.
They have a common vic? No kidding?
Okay, so we have a motion made by Mr. Kratman to pull two, second by Mr. Mackey.
Absolutely.
All those in favor, seeing to by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
Chair, do we want to bring Petroyl in? Or do we want to?
My suggestion is.
Say yes.
Let the Board of Health.
Let the Board of Health do it.
They've been called in front of the Board of Health. It's their matter. Let them resolve it, and then the Board of Health can notify us. They're we're fine.
Okay, so they just need to, I think they need to be notified that
2025 common vic.
Our next meeting is on the 17th. The license expires the 31st, so they need, they have a two-week window.
These are pending, so.
To resolve their issues.
I don't think we should have signed those.
They will not get their license until January.
Okay.
We'll call them.
Next up is liquor license renewals. Liquor license renewals, we have Three Amigos, Angelina's, Applebee's, Brothers, Cafe Sicilia, Hilton, John Ryan's, Longhorns, TJ Callahan's, Treehouse, Wilmington, Tewksbury Alks, and the Whamisette Lanes, uh, Whamisette. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
You're going to approve it with the Treehouse?
Steven's Treehouse.
No.
Motion to approve with pulling out Treehouse.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Ryder.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, seeing to by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
Liquor license renewals.
Okay, which one is this one? Will those complete those licenses?
Treehouse is on the next one.
Okay. Okay. 2025 liquor license renewals, 11-12 meeting complete. We got Three Amigos, 99, Alfresca's, Andy's Convenience, Brothers, Cafe Sicilia, Circle K's, City Wine and Spirits, Escapology, JD's, JC Spirits, Luna Rosa, Main Street Liquors, MB Spirits, Oak Deal One Stop, Sam's Variety, Shell Food Mart, Smitty's, Tewksbury Convenience, Tewksbury Ride and Gun Club, The Market at Alfresca, The Pizza Bar, and Whamisette. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, seeing to by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
Mr. Chairman, on the meeting, the ones pending documents, Treehouse is on that list.
But these are pending, so we can't approve them.
No, we have to bring those back, I think. Mr. Montori, are you looking for approval on the pending documents?
On the which documents? I couldn't hear.
Pending.
Pending.
Yeah.
I would hold pending until the 17th.
This one is pending, goes under that one. Okay. That's it for liquor license renewals and all the renewals. Town manager, you're up. Is this the last time you're up?
I hope so.
Motion to weaken.
First, I'm going to do the easy part, which is town council's invoice, which is.
No cats involved?
No cat, no problem for the cat hitting the computer. I'd recommend the board approve town council's invoice in the amount of $3,527.50.
So moved.
Second.
I had a motion made by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, seeing to by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous. Next up is minutes.
No, he wasn't, Mr. Montori was not done with his comments.
He wasn't done.
No, he got the easy part. Now, he's got the emotional part he's uncomfortable with.
We were waiting for the, you know, the speech. I was trying to bail out.
Well, it won't be much, it won't be a long speech. I like how Pat moves along the meetings. First of all, I just want to say, yes, it is my last board meeting tonight, and I want to thank this board for all of your support over the past few years. It's been a great pleasure working with you. I want to thank all of the previous boards, especially the board that appointed me, which was Anne Marie Stronach, Todd Johnson, Doug Sears, Scott Wilson, and David Gay. They gave me an opportunity to come here, and I'll always be grateful for that. I have loved working here for the past 14 years. I've enjoyed working with all of the, all the elected officials, all of the appointed officials, the residents, and most importantly, the people that work here. We were talking about it the other day and at the department head meeting today, with the exception of some, a few people in the police and fire departments, I've appointed everybody that works there. And that has been my proudest moment, because they are great people that work here. You have excellent employees. You have outstanding department heads. The town is in a great place. John Curran has taken over as a seasoned manager, and I have all the confidence that he'll do a great job also. So, I want to thank you. I appreciate everything that this town has done for me and for my family. I will always be grateful for that. And if there's anything anyone needs moving forward, I'm available, and I will help out in any way. The success of this town is extremely important to me. A lot of time and effort's been put in. No one person deserves the credit for us, for its success, and I will always be available to help out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montori. Okay, we don't have any minutes, but now we're in board member report, so now it's our turn to get back at them. We'll start with Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had an economic development meeting two weeks ago now, and we had the Tewksbury Wilmington Chamber in, as well as the Lowell Chamber in. I think it was a very informative meeting, and I think we're, we're going to move in the right direction. I think we're, we'll bring the new town manager in and try to brainstorm on how we can market Tewksbury in a better way. Not that we've done it in a bad way, but think outside the box and try and bring some commercial or industrial into town that will help offset the taxes for residents. Thank you, Mr. Montori, being, you know, as a short timer here, and thank you for all that you've done. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish to thank you, Mr. Montori, for your leadership, knowledge, skills, and care and mentorship to our staff, you have, that you've given to our community, the residents, our businesses, and I thank you for your friendship. It has been a pleasure to serve most of the time, it's always a pleasure with you, through many difficult times in this community. It's been a pleasure to serve alongside you, and I wish you all the best in your next act. You have left a tremendous legacy.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ryder covered the committees, so we're good there. And Richard, I know how much you love this part, so I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank you for your tireless work as long as I've been on here and got to see it up close, as well as your entire career here. And for me personally, I got to learn quite a bit from you. I came in and had a lot of questions, and you put up with every single one of them and gave me great answers, even if I did have to push back a little bit to not keep answering my off-hour emails when they come through. But, but great job, and you will be missed, and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Kratman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did not have an LRTA meeting, but this afternoon, we had, the MBT Advisory Board came in, and myself, town manager Montori, and new town manager, Mr. Curran, met with them. It was just a, an update, just, it wasn't really going to get much. It was, they were stopping in to let us know they, they're around and to give us, you know, what their, what the budget's going like and, you know, what's going on. Didn't really provide much information, other than they were stopping in to say hello. We met with them, we talked with them, nothing really changes. With that, Mr. Montori, I just, I've worked with you for over a decade. It's like, I remember you trying to convince me to, when I was just living in town, to be on boards in the community, and I fought you all the way until I finally gave in and joined this board. But with that said, it just, you know, the one thing I love about Richard is that the two of us have gone at it head-to-head, and, you know, we've, I think the people in the outside office thought we were fighting because we'd be yelling, arguing, going back and forth, fighting different things. But when we're all said and done, we walked out, like, oh, have a great weekend, have a good day, always because we're looking to do what's best for the town. Heated arguments in both directions, but I never, ever lost respect for you, because you stuck to your principles of what you believed was best, and I stuck to what I believed was mine. And when it was all said and done, we always came to an agreement where we thought was the best for the community. And I really appreciate that. I know you always had the residents' best interest at heart, and you've done a wonderful job bringing a team together. You know, we're one of the communities around that other communities are jealous of. And because our departments work well together, you know, when we're doing something, we rally together as a community, and that's, it came from your leadership. And I really appreciate all the hard work, the unbelievable. I don't think anybody realizes the hours that the man put in, because he would get vacation, we'd give him vacation. I'm like, I don't know why we're giving it to him. He never takes it. I can't, I don't remember in a decade you taking more than one week's vacation in a year. And I just, you're always here, you're always answering the phone on weekends, taking calls at night. If something happened, my phone was ringing, and I appreciate that. I don't know how, we're not going to talk to each other the next couple of weeks, because that, I may call you anyway. It's just like, I talk to the man 15 times a week, and he's always picks up the phone. And he's always available, always doing something, and I know whatever you decide to do in the future, you're going to be successful and wonderful, and hopefully you take some time to yourself and enjoy, maybe go to a beach or something and enjoy yourself, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sir.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Kratman. I'm going to pull a, Mr. Seb, we're going to read a poem. No, I'm on. I think I'm scared. No, I just want to go back to what you said, Mr. Montori, and you said, it's not one person that makes it work, but there is a leader in you that made it work.
Thank you.
You took us in the right direction through your honesty, your integrity, and your work ethic.
Thank you.
And I have worked with you on this board for a few years and a few other boards in the past, and I really appreciate the knowledge that you bring to the table, and I think the town of Tewksbury is going to miss you dearly. So anything that you need, you call us. How's that sound?
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome. So with that being said.
Motion adjourned.
We have a motion adjourned by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, seeing the by saying aye?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well.